Hmm?
No, no. No, no.
You know, I got real fortunate, my mother covered all of our colleges. And now many of us.
You're in public hearings, I don't even.
Had to pay for all of the medicals and, and undergrads. You did? You don't think he was dead?
They haven't got it, yeah. I thought Belmont Woods. I thought Tad would, uh, Todd.
Yeah, I should be, I'll be. Todd had a meeting with W I S I, so he may be.
Okay, well, if you can, you wanna do. Yeah, because, yeah, we're ready to go, I didn't know that. Yeah, I'm ready to go, yeah.
Good evening, everybody, and, uh, beautiful March evening. My plow's on for the first time, and nothing happened. I am not happy. So, uh, if you would, uh, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we're honored to have, all the way from the thumb of Michigan, LaPierre, Michigan, Brad Ruckles will, uh, lead us in a prayer before we open a meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Can we pray? Gracious God, we thank you for the gift of life that we each share, for the happiness and joy that we share in our families and with our friendships. We thank you especially for the opportunity to serve the people of our city and the people within our community here in Westfield. We pray that for all of our civil servants represented, that we would have the wisdom to be able to make sound decisions, that we would be able to work for the common and shared good of everyone. And together, we pray for the peace and prosperity of our community. That it was, would prosper, that we would prosper along with it. We thank you for all that you are doing in our midst, and pray that you would bless the proceedings this evening, in Jesus's name, amen.
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 Brad, tell us about your new, uh, location and all that you want.
Oh, yeah.
Your place.
Oh, yeah, so it was, uh, just a few months ago, it seems, that we were, uh, before you guys for the, uh, facility that we're getting ready to move into, and so we have just signed the lease on that, so that we're officially owners of the tenant. We're going through the process of waiting to get in all the stuff with the plans for the state, but we're hoping that by the, uh, at least early fall or so, we should be able to be moving into a facility, leased facility down the road from the Westfield High School. So, we've been portable in Westfield now for six years, so. It's a long time to be setting up and tearing down out of bins, so we're looking forward to an end of that.
Great, so when, when do you hope to occupy?
Uh, that depends on.
The bureaucracy?
The, the process, the building permits and all the other fun stuff there, but, uh, yeah, we'll, uh, we'll happily move forward to that when it's.
Hopefully this year.
Oh, yes, that, that, yes, if not, yeah, we'll be praying for other reasons, so, yeah.
Great, hey, that's, that's fun, seeing a, a startup church and finds a home, that's, uh, it's what we like to see, thanks for being here, very much. President A, get your meeting.
Thank you. Uh, would the clerk note the presence of the quorum and call the roll, please?
Here.
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 All right, thank you, appreciate it. Uh, next time on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Uh, may I have a motion, please?
Move to approve, uh, council minutes from February twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen.
Second.
Have a motion by Steve Hoover and a second from Joe Edwards. All those in favor of approving the minutes as stated, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose. The minutes are approved, thank you. Moving on to the claims docket. Uh, I entertain a motion to approve claims as stated.
Move to approve claims.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Dr. Mark Keen and a second by Cindy Spooljerrick. All those in favor of approv- approving the docket, the claims docket as stated, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose. The, uh, docket is approved, and we can pay our bills. Tonight, it gives me a great pleasure to, uh, note that we have two special presentations tonight. I see Todd Bertrand. Uh, would you like to introduce our first special presentation, Todd?
Mr. President, fellow counselors, it's my, uh, pleasure tonight to introduce, uh, bring back to this, uh, podium, uh, members representing Western Governors University, Indiana. Uh, as you may recall, we forged a relationship with W G U, Indiana, approximately two years ago, wherein, uh, we created a, not only a, a relationship for continued education, higher learning for, uh, at, at a discounted rate for any employee that may, may choose to, uh, pursue such, but also a, a, uh, financial benefit, uh, to members of this community, uh, exclusively, uh, in the form of tuition grants and scholarships. So, uh, without further ado, I'll, I'll, uh, introduce Kyle Utter, uh, representing W G U, and let him address, uh, this group and the council. Kyle?
Thank you.
Mayor Cook, members of the council, thank you for having us back. Um, we are W G U, Indiana, or Western Governors University. Uh, we're Indiana's online university, uh, providing bachelor's and master's degrees, uh, for primarily working adults who have some college but no degree and need to go back to school to obtain their degree. Uh, tonight, uh, we do have, uh, current student of ours, Karen, and, um, her two children with us, um, and we're gonna do a scholarship presentation. Right before we do that, though, I just wanted to update you that we did, um, jump from thirty-nine students, um, current students, to fifty-five current students since the last time we presented, um, to you, uh, and that's in the city of Westfield. Um, and we also went from thirty-seven graduates to forty-nine graduates, so. Uh, I think those numbers are great, and we look to continue, uh, to improve upon those, um, with the different offerings. I did present some of you, um, the members of the council, uh, with some information about W G U that you can spread to those, um, who maybe ask you about more information, and then those tuition, um, grants, two hundred dollars. So, that's two hundred dollars cash for anybody that you talk to that needs to go back to school, um, and wants to do it with W G U. So, um, we are, in the state, we have eclipsed five thousand students, um, within the state of W G U, Indiana, and also, um, over four thousand one hundred, um, graduates within the state as well. We just got ranked the number-one online software development degree in the nation, um, so that is a huge deal for us and our I T programs, um, with I T and the way that it's, um, coming to Indianapolis and the surrounding areas, and we're becoming, uh, this area for tech talent. Um, that is a big, uh, feather in our hat to promote moving forward. So, if you could help us do that, that'd be great. Um, we are also announcing the extension of the two thousand dollar mayoral scholarship, um, so we're gonna do that again, um, this coming year, and we also have the five percent discount that Todd mentioned. So, uh, Karen would like to come on up, and if the mayor, and perhaps Jim and Chuck, if you guys wanna come down for our picture? Karen is currently enrolled in our M B A program. Um, she is a resident of the city of Westfield, as I mentioned. She chose Indiana primarily because we have good reviews, that is all online, and our tuition was much cheaper, um, or more affordable, at six thousand dollars a year, flat-rate tuition, so. Um, she is a staff accountant currently at Alpha Chi Omega Fraternity, and, uh, she thinks that it's great that her community, um, is encouraging the residents to go back to school by offering such a scholarship, and she thinks more community should do it. Well, we thank you for your continued support. Um, I love the, the partnership that we have. I just went to the website the other day and saw that right there on the front page, City of Westfield, W G U, Indiana, so. Yeah, thanks for having us.
Don't you wanna say a few words about one of your struggling students?
Our, our struggling student, no, Todd is, uh, doing great. He's in our Masters in Management and Leadership Program. Um, last, I talked to him, he was doing all right.
Well, I've been looking at his grades and we've got some work.
Well, then he may not be, have relayed that information. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Kyle. Uh, next on the agenda, I'd like to invite, uh, Brad Cozy? Coza, uh, to the podium. Brad has, uh, taken over the executive role at our, our, uh, Executive Airport, has the Airport Director, and it's been a while since we've heard what's been going on out that way, and we're happy to have you here tonight and learn more about, uh, what's happening out there.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. I feel like I should disclaim though, right off. I have neither money to give nor a big check to present it with, so I feel woefully underprepared.
Next time, we'll have, we'll buy you back soon.
Good evening again, uh, again, my name is Brad Coza. I'm concluding my eighth month as Airport Director at Indianapolis Executive Airport, so thank you for the opportunity, not only to introduce myself, but also to share an update on what has been a, certainly a busy and transformative twenty sixteen at the airport. I'm originally from Valparaiso, Indiana, had the opportunity to study Aviation Management at Purdue University, and for the past three years was the Airport Manager at Jasper County Airport in Rensselaer, Indiana. As of this past July, then, have had the opportunity to serve the Hamilton County Airport Authority, and as of August, am a Westfield resident. So, one, that's probably the biggest thing I wanna share tonight. As we reflected on twenty sixteen, it's, I think it's important to note, uh, a little, very briefly, uh, how we got here and certainly why, why I'm here. Uh, in spanning twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen, uh, the private business at the airport that was, uh, handling not only aircraft handling and customer service, but also contracted part-time to run the airport, Montgomery Aviation, uh, they, they sold their business, and in so doing, the Airport Authority had the opportunity to consider its vision and where it was going, and in so doing sought its own full-time employee to oversee the safe maintenance and operation of the airport, its financial administration, as well as community outreach. And so, grateful for the opportunity to serve them and serve alongside of so many within Hamilton County. So, that's, that's a bit of how we get to today. Uh, as we reflected then on twenty sixteen, we looked and, and started, uh, at the, with the numbers, and you have a hand up before you tonight, uh, that kind of details a little bit of those, and I'll highlight just some of them for you. Uh, each year, Indy Exec supports just under thirty-five thousand five hundred takeoffs and landings, making us the tenth busiest airport in the state of Indiana. What was more encouraging to us, though, is data that we just received in twenty sixteen from the Federal Aviation Administration, that shows at an average of seventeen point two business flights per day, we are the second busiest airport in Indianapolis by that, by that metric. Why we're most encouraged by that is because not only did we feel that, or did we see that, we thought, at the airport, but also we think it's very reflective of the unprecedented growth that we're seeing, not just in Westfield, but in all the surrounding communities in both Boone and Hamilton Counties. So, we're very encouraged, uh, by that number. I think, as you can certainly attest to, uh, in, in Westfield, with the unprecedented growth that, that you're experiencing, uh, the airport is, is feeling that as well, and so the old adage of build it and they will come, I'm afraid no longer applies. Rather, we're, we're all struggling in the sense of, a good struggle, I should say. Uh, they've come, and together, we're all aspiring to build it, improve it, keep up with that growth, and the airport certainly is, is no different. So, what are those, those infrastructure items that, that allow those operations to occur? I've, as, as best I can on a, on a sheet of paper, I've brought the airport to you. Uh, and so the airport of, of today consists of several things. One of the focal points, obviously, is the terminal, uh, and the hangar facilities, and, and in those, we partner with, uh, the new owners of Montgomery Aviation, as well as Taft Aviation, towards that aircraft handling, the customer service, as well as, uh, aircraft hangaring. In addition, uh, thank you to those who joined us back in September, uh, for the inauguration of Beck's Hybrid's new corporate hangar out at the airport. It is our first such hangar, we're very excited about that for many reasons, but one of them is we believe it's a gateway to that continued, uh, that continued development. And you can see there on your sheet, we've highlighted the, uh, executive taxiway that is already paved, and it is primed for development in that regard to, uh, in the years ahead. So, we're, we're very grateful for Beck's for taking that first step, if you will. Uh, none of this, of course, occurs, though, without our, our runway. It, we are a single runway airport, we have a, a north-south oriented runway, fifty-five hundred feet in length by one hundred feet in width, and, uh, the great thing about that runway is, is manifold, but the, the biggest is in two thousand nine, its reconstruction in concrete, which is very rare for, I would say is rare for an airport of, of our, uh, operations, was entirely funded through, um, a federal grant. And so, quite an asset for us to preserve and protect for many years to come. Just like any business, then, the airport does have a, a capital improvement plan, something that looks out to the future. Uh, as you can see there, there are three focuses of that capital improvement plan, from a wildlife, uh, fencing project, to a runway and taxiway extension project, as well as other infrastructure investments to keep up with that growth that we have talked about. And as I mentioned grants a minute ago, they are an important part of our development going forward. When we partner with the Federal Aviation Administration, uh, we are eligible on pro- many of these projects for ninety percent reimbursement, and then the remaining ten percent, we share with the state of Indiana. So, that's the airport numbers, if you'll be so kind as to turn your sheet over, I'll conclude with maybe the more, more exciting part, that is the, the airport in pictures looking specifically, uh, at those who we serve. Um, just like the roads and rails that serve Westfield and Hamilton County, Aviation and certainly the airport are, can serve as a gateway to our community, and we, we certainly aspire to do that in many different facets. First and foremost is to do so as a welcoming gateway to our community, as well as to those who are learning to fly, in this case, through Montgomery Aviation's Flight School. We talked about the unprecedented growth we're seeing in the business community, and so, we really, uh, wanna continue to work hard to be an economic gateway to our business community and its growth and development, not only by bringing folks into do business with those, with our local businesses, but also allow them to reach out regionally and nationally if their business interests take them there. Obviously, we're honored to be a transportation gateway, and specifically, uh, to those who serve and protect, so we've, about once a month, we have the Air National Guard bring in, brings in helicopters and things as they transit, uh, transit those assets around our area. Lastly, but certainly not least, is, is the community that we serve. And so, serving, attempting to serve as a gateway to, uh, all of our gathering and support of one another, the biggest opportunity, we would already extend an early invitation to you to join us this year on Saturday, August fifth, for what will be the eleventh annual fly-in hosted by Montgomery Aviation and benefiting Down Syndrome, Indiana. It is an annual event that brings out several thousand to the airport. Last year, uh, it was my first, it was my fourth weekend at the airport, and I was blown away. So, would certainly encourage you, if you're so able, to please join us. There is also a second opportunity this year in Ju- in August, excuse me, uh, in which on August seventeenth, we'll be hosting a joint Zionsville and Westfield Chamber of Commerce luncheon at the airport, and would certainly welcome your attendance if you're so able. And lastly, at the bottom of the page is, is my contact information. Please always feel welcome to reach out if there are any questions I may answer or be of any assistance to you, and thank you certainly for the opportunity to not only introduce myself, but update you on, on the events of, uh, of twenty sixteen out at the airport.
All right, thank you very much. All right, any comments? Moving on, uh, we'll start out with the old business. We have before us ordinance sixteen fifty-one, the Grand Millennium Center, P U D. Kevin, Kevin's not here tonight.
I'll, I'll be standing in for Kevin, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Horkay, will we take note, Mr. Horkay is recusing himself, please? Thank you.
Well, good evening, members of the council. Uh, before you this evening is the, uh, P U D for the Grand Millennium Center. This item was introduced to you, uh, in December, on December twelfth. Uh, since then, it's been to the Plan Commission for Public Hearing, uh, for a Plan Commission vote, which was unanimously in favor, seven to zero. Uh, they, this project has been introduced to the, um, Grand Junction Task Group, where it was, uh, supported by that group, and, uh, correspondence to that effect has been received by my office. Uh, this is approximately sixty-six acres, located south of Park Street, along Thirty-One, down to one hundred and sixty-ninth Street. And I can pull up the location map here. Uh, and with that, I, unless there are specific questions, this, you, you all received a presentation on this when it was introduced, and it has not significantly changed. Um, there've been some minor tweaks at the Plan Commission level, but with, with that, I'll, I'll leave it, leave it for you folks. It's eligible and ready for consideration this evening.
All right, thank you. I entertain a motion.
I would move approval.
Dr. Mark Keen moved for approval, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. I think Joe Ed- I don't know, Joe Edwards will give it to you. All right, uh, any discussion? Any questions?
One question for Matt. In, in all of this, uh, is this area annexed in the city right now?
It is.
Will there be a financial plan presented as it progresses?
It would not surprise me.
I mean, okay, but, uh, I would hope that in that financial plan there's significant private, as well as public investment to, to make this thing a go. Uh, we need, we need private investment, especially along U S Thirty-One.
Any other comments?
I have one question, I'm trying to make sure. There was discussion at the, um, at the A P C about that proximity slope issue for the multifamily section. I don't know if you, were you there, Matt?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's been incorporated. I think Steve can probably speak to it.
I, I'm not, I'm not finding it.
I'm not, I'm not seeing it.
Now, give me a moment. This is, again, one, it'd be great to have a little heads up. I'm not familiar with this ordinance, I didn't, I didn't work on it, so.
Okay, here, I did find it, section seven one F, maximum building height, three stories or a height equivalent to a two-to-one proximity slope from the multifamily district. East district.
So, that covers your.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I read it in a red line, but I have, I have not, I did not look at this draft.
Yes, that is what we agreed to.
Any other comments? Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Joe, could you call, uh, Mr. Horkay back in the room, please? The next two items, looking back. The next two items we'll consider together, it's, uh, one hundred percent voluntary annexation, Chatham Hills Phase Two, with the corresponding fiscal plan. We'll vote on each item separate, but it is up for adoption, um, tonight, and it will be presented by Ms. Pam Howard.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Pam Howard, Economic and Community Development Department. Before you this evening, we do have a one hundred percent voluntary annexation, along with the associated fiscal plan for one hundred and eighty-seven acres to be part of the Chatham Hills development. This is generally located at the southwest corner of U S Thirty-One and State Road Thirty-Eight, and will include portions of the golf course and also the mixed-use area of the development. The public hearing for this item was in, was in February, and as Mr. Aig said, they, they are both available for adoption consideration this evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Counselor, do we have to approve the fiscal plan first? All right, so, I'd entertain a motion to approve Resolution Seventeen One O One fiscal plan.
So move.
I'd like a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, those signify, uh, with a voice vote. All those in favor of Resolution Seventeen One O One signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose. The resolution.
For the record, Jim, uh, you stated Seventeen One O One, it's Seventeen O One. Just so that that's.
No.
Clear.
No, no, the fiscal plan is Seventeen.
I'm sorry, you're correct.
One O One. All right.
I'm sorry.
So, uh, thank you, uh, the resolution stands approved. And the ordinance now we will consider is Ordinance Seventeen O One. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, will the clerk call the roll on Ordinance Seventeen O One, please?
Yes.
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 All right, thank you. Appreciate that. The last item under Old Business is Ordinance Seventeen O Two, Belmont Woods Rezone, uh, presented by Ms. Howard.
Thank you, again, Pam Howard, Economic and Community Development Department. For you this evening, have a rezoning of sixteen and a half acres from A G S F one to S F two to allow for a single-family development, to be known as Belmont Woods. This twenty-seven lot infill project is located on the east side of Cary, Cary Road, between the existing Walnut Ridge and Cary Glen Developments. The, this petition is a rezoning only, and no new standards are being proposed at this time. I do have David Weekly Homes as the applicant here, if you have any questions of them. And this item was introduced on February thirteenth, and received a public hearing, along with a favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission on March sixth. At this time, I am available for questions, thank you.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion for Seventeen O Two?
So move.
Cindy Spooljerrick. And the second by Steve Hoover. Is there any discussion, questions? Hearing none, uh, will the clerk please call, poll the council?
Yes.
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 All right, thank you. Now, moving on to new business for this evening, and guess who is a back? Thank you, Ms. Pa- Howard. Ordinance Seventeen O Four, Field Brewing in the Junction, planned unit developed. This is a council introduction tonight.
It is, correct.
And it's a local opportunity, it's a, it's an opportunity for a new business in downtown, and so, take it away.
Okay, thank you, again, Pam Howard, with Economic and Community Development Department. For you this evening for introduction is a change of zoning request for a planned uni- development district to be known as Field Brewing in the Junction, which will accommodate a new restaurant and brewery. The proposed site is located at the southeast corner of State Road Thirty-two and Cherry Street, and is currently zoned local business historic. The standards in the proposed ordinance will allow for development of the restaurant brewery as depicted on the concept plan and the character exhibits. This was prevent, presented to the Grand Junction Task Group on January thirty-first, and did receive a letter of support. This item is scheduled for a public hearing at the April third Plan Commission meeting. I do have the petitioners here, Greg and Jackie Dykis, who are here to make a brief presentation, after which both they and I will be available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. and Mrs. Dykis.
Thank you, thank you very much for your time this evening.
Please state your name and, uh, address for the record.
My name is Greg Dykis.
And I'm Jackie Dykis.
Add what's you say? We live at one-two-three-four Viking Sapphire Court.
One-two-three-zero.
That's what I said. One-two-three-zero Viking Sapphire Court.
All right, very good, very good.
All right. As I said, my name is Greg Dykis, this is my wife, Jackie. We've lived in Westfield now for three years. Um, I'm an orthopedic surgeon, and Jackie is a sports dietitian. Um, we're here this evening to propose a three-point-six million dollar project for the southeast corner of Cherry and Maine. For the past ten years, Jackie and I have been developing our concept of a brewery. Um, and our concept, uh, isn't the stereotypical brew pub that you might be accustomed to. Uh, we envision a more family-friendly, uh, neighborhood destination that serves a higher standard of food and beer made with more quality ingredients. Um, we moved to this community three years ago because of its reputation to be a great place to raise a family, and our expectations have certainly been exceeded. It's a very welcoming community, very family-oriented, um, and when we learned of the city's commitment to the development of the downtown area, we realized this is the perfect location, um, to, um, to execute, um, our vision of a neighborhood brewery. Uh, so that's where the concept of field brewing came to be.
Field brewing will be a gastropub serving high-quality food and beer in a casual, family-friendly atmosphere. The food will be sophisticated with local ingredients as often as possible, with many menu items served over a wood fire, or prepared over a wood fire, not served. Uh, we're seeking your support. We're seeking your support of our vision and overall the development of our project, and we have tonight members of our team to answer any initial questions you might have, but really excited for the opportunity to be a part of this growing community and follow in your lead. Any questions?
I only have one question, since I drove by there today. I'm assuming all the fenced off, snow-fenced-off area is the area you're planning to, to develop?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
I might add that they did present before the DWA Downtown and Westfield Association, and they received favorable comments from that group prior to tonight's meeting. So, that was about two weeks ago, was it?
Yeah, late January.
Late January.
Yeah.
So, what kind of timeframe are you looking at as far as starting, finishing, opening?
Yes, well, we're hoping by the time this approval process is complete, that we'll be, we plan to clear the property this week, actually. The foundation would then begin around July, with a potential beginning to brew around December and an opening date sometime in the winter timeframe. So, maybe January, February.
So, within a year from now, you hope to be open?
Yes, we do hope so. Yeah.
Thank you.
You also plan to have a distillery attached?
Currently, so, we would need to have our brewing license for three years before we can acquire a distillery license. So, if you see right there on the right-hand side of the project, on the lower, lower end there, right there, that is the distillery end of the building, but until we can actually utilize that for distillery place, we plan to utilize it as an event space. We see a lot of great community events there, maybe a movie night, hosting sports teams, to business meetings. We feel like it could have a lot of use for those purposes until we can apply the distillery license.
Could you talk a little bit about the landscaping setbacks and how you tend to use, how you envision the use of the property?
Yes. We were taking into account a potential future expansion of Main Street or thirty-two. So, we have the project set thirty feet back from that line, and right now, there's that green space in the front there, which initially it may have seemed disadvantaged to have lost that space, but we're really excited because we're actually going to implement raised garden beds there. There's six garden beds in front, and we plan to grow our own fresh ingredients to be utilized in, in the restaurant.
And you have some outside amenities?
Oh, yeah. I skipped over that. I was excited about the garden. Yeah, absolutely. In that center area, we have a courtyard, and part of my goal, or our goal throughout the whole project, is from most of the seats inside, you, a parent could have visual to the outside courtyard space, and maybe watch children play, or family members out there. So, we're trying to really make this a fun destination area that pulls people out of their homes and just lets them escape a little bit. Yeah.
Is that the shaded area?
That shaded area is the courtyard, and then just above that will be a covered outside seating.
Any other questions or comments?
How many parking spaces, or do you think you're going to have on here?
Around the, the area completely, there's thirteen at this point. We're hoping for support from the city as well to maybe line the street a little better because right outside our space on Main Street and around the property, there are eleven spaces just immediately out front of our property, three on Cherry Street, and then even between Walnut and Cherry, I believe I counted fourteen more spaces, that none of those are ever used. So, we're hoping we can utilize more of those spaces. In addition, there's conversation, the property just to the south of us on Cherry Street, owned by Frank, we're discussing maybe turning part of his property into additional parking space that we would have shared parking with that. Yeah. So, we're, we're definitely making sure we try to explore every possibility with that.
Well, I for one certainly appreciate your interest in investing in our downtown, taking that space over that's been vacant for a while, and turning it into a very nice amenity for our downtown. I really appreciate what I'm seeing, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
We'll pass this on to APC.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. At this time, that concludes our normal business, but residents who wish to address the council on items not on the agenda are welcome to do so at this time. Do we have any cards?
I have no cards.
Would anybody like to address the council? All right. Once, twice. All right. This time, I entertain city council comments, anything from APC, Steve?
APC, Matt, March sixth, we had APC acted on the Grand Millennium P U D, which we addressed tonight, and received a unanimous positive recommendation. We also approved a development plan for Metric Seals, a building expansion. And Belmont Woods P U D received a positive recommendation, which we just acted on.
Okay. Thank you. Cindy, would you like to say anything about...
Yes.
Coffee with counselors?
Yeah. We've been hosting, or we at least had one of our counselor connection meetings, which is kind of like a coffee with a counselor kind of thing, super informal. We had our first one in District One, had, I think, around twenty people, twenty-five people, which was great because we really got a chance to sit in and just talk, and get to know a few more of our residents and some of the things they're thinking about. So, once we finish this process, we'll have a whole slew, I think, of things for the council and probably mayor, too, to consider. So, I wanted to let the public know that we have the second one scheduled for March twenty-eighth, which is Steve Hoover's district, and that'll be at Oak Trace Elementary, seven o'clock, in their multipurpose room. On April eleventh, we have Chuck Lehman's district. We're skipping, skipping around a little bit. So, that's District Four. So, again, April eleventh, seven o'clock, at Maple Glen Multipurpose Room. Oh, and Hoover's, I should say. That's in the cafeteria, not at the multipurpose room at Oak Trace. April twenty-fifth, we have Joe Edwards' district, and that will be in the multipurpose room at Washington Woods, seven o'clock. So, we have each council, counselor in their district, and Jim and I attend these meetings. And if anyone wants to come and hang out and let us know what's on your mind, or meet us if you haven't met us, please do. Hope to see you there.
We had, we had some Cub Scout guests, too, that we entertained at the Coffee with the Counselor, which was very nice to have them a little bit before the meeting. They were working on some citizenship awards, and it was fun to hear them ask their questions and be involved and interested.
Just, just to clarify, too, you don't have to live in the, like District Two, you don't have to live in District Two to attend. These are open to everybody, and since I was the guinea pig, I encouraged all of my people to move on to District Two and Three and attend those meetings, too, to make sure everybody else heard what they had to say.
That's right. That's right.
You may have not noticed it yet, but I did respond earlier that whatever the date was, in later May for District Five was fine. Sure you have to nail down some details on it yet, but I was okay with that.
Yeah, we have to confirm the room, but yours will be in May.
All right. With that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Hey, we got several things here to go over. First of all, tomorrow, nine to eleven a.m. at Chick-fil-A is another, one of our regularly scheduled Coffee with a Cop, so you can drop in and meet some of our great people that watch over us. And speaking of that, spring break's coming up, and one of the, the wonderful services that our police department offers is kind of, they'll babysit your house for you, so to speak, if you'll register with them. I think you can do it online. I know you can do it in person. If, when you're gone, the dates you're gone, and they will inspect your home on a regular basis, and even send you a letter telling you that they did so when they get finished. So, it's a great service, helps them get into the neighborhoods, and keeps an eye on your property. This Thursday, in this room, five p.m., we're going to have a meeting to discuss the proposal to upgrade State Road thirty-two or Main Street through our downtown area. It's been a topic of discussion for probably ten years now, and with all of the development downtown and to another new brewery announcing is wonderful, we have begun to work within that to get this potential project actually on their firm plans, because we do not own that street. It's owned by, by the state, and the Grand Junction Task Group, some six, eight years ago, spent a lot of time looking at traffic patterns throughout the entire downtown, the amending of the thoroughfare plan to reflect that, and specifically, a proposal on what thirty-two Main Street would look through, look, look like through downtown. So, we're going to kind of refresh all of that, answer questions, talk about the setbacks and how wide it would be, and, and talk about, no, there's not going to be a bypass somewhere around Westfield, so we got to deal with what we have, and we'll, we'll get it figured out. The latest business to make a home at the Grand Park Event Center is the Ninja Zone Academy is now open and has a mixture of gymnastics, martial arts, obstacle course, and a freestyle movement training, whatever that may be. But if you look in there, it's pretty wild-looking, you know? So, we do have a grand opening, I think, coming up here pretty soon on that, in the next couple of weeks, I think, so, great entry out there. Couple of weeks ago, Fire at Station Eighty-three held a pancake breakfast, raised over twelve-hundred dollars for Relay of Life, and in the true, I guess, tradition of this city, it was so well-attended, they ran out of food. Good sign. And this coming, let's see, Thursday afternoon, at noon, the Westfield Chamber of Commerce is hosting their monthly luncheon, will be the State of Public Safety, where we'll hear from both police and fire. That's at eleven a.m. at the Palomino Ballroom, out towards the airport, way out west. First bulk trash day for this year will be May thirteenth, eight to noon. There'll be more details coming out of that. Council Connection is March twenty-eighth at Oak Trace Elementary Schools at seven p.m. And lastly, you'll be seeing more on this, our highly-successful student impact program that enjoys a home right near the high school, just a little bit south of Hoover on, on Union, is likewise having a, a similar problem in that they are running out of space. So, we'll be looking at ways to, for this community to help that highly-successful organization involved in, in working with our kids. So, there'll be more on that coming up.
And Mayor, we have the scouting breakfast, too.
And what's the date of that?
March twenty-second.
March twenty-second.
The Bridgewater Club.
Thank you. We'll be at Bridgewater at, I think it's seven a.m. There's usually space available, and you're asked to make a donation. There's nothing charged or anything to, for entry. It's a great time to hear a little bit about the, what the scouts are doing in this community. It's good. Thanks.
Scouting gives back in a lot of ways, through the Eagle Scout Projects, and we've seen them help with our parks and other things, so, if you're so inclined, it's a great program. The Scouts are really very talented, and you'll have an opportunity to get to know some of them. All right. Mr. Mayor, is that?
I vote adjourned.
I enter a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you.
Where are you going? You're going out.
Jamaica.
Jamaica, man. I didn't know Jamaica.